Have a special meeting in fact today. Here we have Brian Thurlow, that's from the municipal office. He remains with us for a little bit. We're going to be talking about strategic planning. So welcome.
Thank you, worship, members of council. So as indicated, I'm here to speak with you about strategic planning. And I believe all of you have a copy of the slides in front of you. Just so you know, we have our standard disclaimer slide. So as with any of our presentations, I'm not delivering this within a specific context. So this is just a brief overview of the process and it's not intended to be a detailed reference. And if you have questions about specific issues, please raise them and we will try to address them. So as we go through the presentation today, we're going to talk about organizational assessments, the strategic planning process, or at least the initial aspects of it. And then we'll have a discussion and open the floor for any questions. So what is strategic planning? Strategic planning is a process by which a corporation, or in this case municipality, looks at its future and develops a plan to get there. What you need is a vision for the future that includes all aspects of the municipality, council, staff, management, and the community. You may already be partway there if you have an economic development plan. We do not have, may not have a holistic plan. A holistic plan will implement key elements of the strategic planning model and ensure that they are linked and interdependent. Wayne Gretzky, when he was playing, said that he would skate to where he thinks the puck will be, not where it is now. A strategic plan is a document that reports the final results of a collaborative effort of a community to chart a path, to address perceived challenges within the community, move towards a shared vision of what the community could be, identify the steps needed to achieve that vision, commit resources in a thoughtful and directed manner to support the vision, and to track progress over time. You have to remember that when you're doing this, it is important to set marked and achievable goals with performance measures that can be measured. Because first of all, if you can't define a performance goal that's measurable, you're not going to figure out what it is you want to achieve. And secondly, that which is, you know, it's an old saying that that which is not, that which is not measured is not done. So as long as you can have a goal which can be measured, then staff can understand what it is that they are looking to achieve. Your community can understand what it is that you are trying to implement. And you can also track progress over time. So why plan? Well, one important aspect of a plan is that it establishes a common vision. It establishes an understanding between the community, staff, and council as to where you're going to go. In the perfect world, of course, council would pass policy that everyone could understand and get exactly what council meant every time without question. Unfortunately, we live in a human world where that doesn't always happen. The advantage of a strategic plan is that it gives staff a way to implement policy or understand policy within a framework. So that if a policy can be interpreted, you know, one way or another, if the strategic, the strategic plan provides a compass direction which way the staff is to implement that policy. Policy is to be implemented in concert with the strategic plan. So that gives staff the benefit of being able to understand better how council wants things done. And it enables the community to understand when policy is being implemented a certain way, why it is being implemented that way. Another reason for planning is it increases your understanding of your environment as part of your, what they call SWOT, or strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis. Essentially, you go through a process of analyzing your organization. And it allows you to have a better understanding of the resources available to your organizations and the challenges that your organization may be facing now or in the future. It also increases your understanding of your internal organization, both in the context of the strengths of staff and some challenges which might be coming up in the future. For example, when we recently did our Clerks Forum, it was estimated that as many as forty to sixty percent of municipal staff who were retired, senior municipal staff who were retired within this term of council across the Northeast. So I mean, that's a significant potential loss of expertise and knowledge and history that's, that may be affecting your community. It certainly will affect some other communities. It also allows you to align strategic goals with other organizational processes, such as your asset management plan, long-term capital financing, and your budget and where you're going to go. Another concern is that without a plan, staff may, may find that they're always stamping of fires. They're always responding to concerns that are not strategic, but are rather reactive to the situation they find themselves in. Additionally, very often, you'll find that council becomes reactive to the loudest voice that's complaining in the community. Rather than saying, we want to be strategic and this is where we're going, it's going to be, okay, let's, let's try and address this problem because it's making a lot of noise and gaining traction within the community. It also becomes sometimes difficult to answer to county, to rate payers. What am I getting for my taxes? What is it that you're doing for me? You have a strategic plan, you can say, well, this is what we agreed to. This is what the community in its consultative manner agreed that we wanted. And that's what you're getting for your taxes. So if we look at the process, the municipal strategic planning process, essentially, it's a little difficult to tell from this slide, but it's a circle. So you start with an internal, you're scanning your environment and understanding what your environment is. You develop a strategic vision involving council, senior management. Then from that vision, you develop and prioritize strategic goals and initiatives aligned with the vision. Then your internally, your staff will develop a departmental business plans aligned with the strategic plan and the budget. You'll measure and report results. And then you're back into, is that meeting your needs? And you move to the next step of scanning and reviewing how that is doing and getting input from external stakeholders. So where do you start? There are three main steps. First is an organizational assessment and SWOT analysis. The second is to decide where you want to go and how you're going to get there, which is visioning and mission statements. And the third is to identify goals. So the organizational assessment. First of all, you need to look at your policies and procedures and ensure that you are up to date with those so that you are not going to move offside as you move forward with the strategic planning process from the requirements of legislation. The next thing you need to look at is financial items. Are there financial challenges that you are, that have existing which may impede the strategic planning process? Or they need to be addressed during that process? And secondly, you need to deal with your community and ensure that you have the assurance and confidence of your community in moving forward. You may find that you are, you have a different level of readiness at different areas in the organization. So for example, if you have just changed staff in some areas, they may not be familiar enough with their role yet to make decisions with respect to various areas of the organization. So if we look at, say, building controls, we've got to be building chief building official. They may not be familiar enough with their role, with their staff, and their role in the history of the department to make decisions with respect to, or recommendations with respect to building controls. Additionally, if you have gaps in your relationship with the community, you may need to mend those bridges before moving forward in order to have a meaningful and consultative community process. So that you're going to have community buy-in. The most successful plans, most, in my experience, the most successful strategic plans have council buy-in, have community buy-in, and have a champion on council, and championing staff that are going to move them forward. Without, without community buy-in, they quickly fail because community complains to council about them and the council loses the wherewithal or the will and drive to move forward with the plan. Without council buy-in, there's no will to recognize the needs in the budget or the asset management process or the policies that may be needed to move the plan forward. And without a champion, no one is going to hold you to accounting, to looking at, looking at things and say, okay, we've met this goal, we've met this goal, let's move to the next goal. So looking at the organizational assessment and moving towards a SWOT analysis. So a SWOT analysis is a commonly used method to assess where an organization is. It means looking at the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. So the strengths basically are what is the municipality good at doing? Or what are some area, you know, what can you do that others cannot? What do citizens value most about your services? What present strengths continue to make you successful? Weaknesses, clearly there's, what areas of the organization can improve? What do your citizens complain about? What is, they don't like about your services? Are there any issues that create gaps in understanding between council and staff, or council and the community, or staff and the community, and vice versa? Threats would be, for example, as I mentioned, the potential loss of senior staff. And then that over the next little while would be a potential threat to most northern communities. You know, it can be difficult in smaller northern communities to retain and to recruit and retain qualified staff. You know, what are, what gaps are there between citizens' expectations and present service delivery? And then opportunities, then you look at what can we do with what we have or what, what we plan to develop under the plan. So for example, are there services that are, that our municipal, municipality would like, that community would like to have, but they're not providing or have not been providing? Are there services that we are providing, which maybe we should not be providing anymore and transitioning to other services? Are there services which we could sell to other communities and increase revenues which we can then use to fund other services? So after you've done your SWOT analysis, you need to stand back and see the current status of the municipality, the good, the bad, and the ugly. It's a snapshot that allows you to see the potential pitfalls. When you've done that, you can start developing a vision statement. A vision statement, in many regards, is almost philosophical in nature. It should be a positive statement, but it should reflect something which is, you can build a doable and solid plan around. A short statement describing the ideal state the municipality is trying to achieve in the long term for its residents. So it provide, it can provide guidance by articulating what the municipality wishes to become, serve as a signpost that guides people's behaviors and establishes a big standard of excellence. A mission statement is intended to be more practical. So a vision statement is what you want to be. And a mission statement is how you want to get there. An outcome state, it should be an outcome statement which systematically diagrams the vision by answering questions, who, what, and why. It must be realistic and achievable in four to eight years. Basically, we suggest approximately two cycles of strategic planning or terms of council. It outlines what the ultimate result of your work will be. It answers who will do what and why they are striving to achieve this end. And it should be something which is somewhat memorable so that people stays at the forefront of people's minds. The meat of the plan would be in the goals. This is where you decide on your focus areas. Usually those involve somewhere between four to six goals. You know, the average is around five. Not, we encourage you not to go beyond that because within the context of a planning process, it is often, can become difficult to achieve more than that within that timeframe. And then if, as you say, as you see that you're not achieving everything you thought, the plan becomes, people become less interested or become disenchanted with the plan because it doesn't seem to be moving forward because there's too many things to move forward all at once. Five is fairly ambitious and difficult to accomplish. So you want to think about that. The other thing that needs to be done with the goals is that they need to have benchmarks over time throughout that process by which you will identify that you are in fact achieving what it is that you want to do. So you can have a goal which may have several benchmarks within it. If your goal was to improve roads, then you might talk about a goal with respect to winter roads, summer roads. You might talk about maintenance versus capital works being done. Generally, when you're thinking about a goal, you need to start out by listing out everyone's ideas and suggestions and generally move forward without prejudice. If you allow everyone to have their say, then you're, then it allows you the opportunity perhaps to have ideas that you would not otherwise see and which may be beneficial to the overall plan. First list is going to be huge, but typically it becomes readily apparent what the focus areas for the community are. At that point, you then start identifying focus areas and tasks or specific projects in each area. As I said, keeping in mind that they have to be achievable, measurable, both in scope and number, within a specified timeframe. And make sure that your timeframes are reasonable and not too expeditious to achieve, given the resources which you may have available. It can be help, it can be helpful to have someone facilitate that exercise, although it's not always, it is not necessary. Within the strategic planning process, staff, strategic planning should engage a number of stakeholders. The head of council and the C O clerk should be invited, should be included in the planning group and should help drive the development and implementation of the plan. Because strategic planning is a, is a significant responsibility of council, it's worthwhile involving as many counselors as is practical throughout the process. It is important to establish clear guidelines for membership once you mark the side of that in terms of moving into adding in department heads from staff and or representative from community leaders from groups within your municipality. You should consider involving community leaders within your municipality, within your strategic planning process. Because as mentioned, the more you have community buy-in to the process, the more that the community feels that they have been listened to validly and from the beginning, the more likely it is that your plan will succeed. When we talk about involving the public, you need to ensure that all drafts of the strategic plan and all their documents are written in simple, clear terms. You need to distribute the draft plan as widely as possible before all consultation meetings and to give people enough time to consider what it is you're asking of them. You need to listen, one of the important things which is often very difficult and why municipalities sometimes turn to facilitators, external facilitators to assist with the process is listening to comments without being critical and without feeling criticized, right? Very often, people can have a tendency, unfortunately, to get their backup about comments that are made. And that can sometimes tend to derail the process. But if you accept the comments more as, more as a criticism of the service and not personally, and think of it as a way of trying to improve publicly satisfaction of the public with the council, staff, and the services that they're receiving, and not worrying so much about it being sometimes unfortunately a potentially personal comment, you'll have more success with the process. It has also helped if you have more than one public consultation so that you give the community as much opportunity as possible to have feed, feedback into the process. You should directly invite special interest groups where appropriate. So if you have some special interest groups, and past when I've dealt with Espinola, I've followed some special interest groups. You may want to consider involving their members directly by invitation so that they have buy-in as well. So if they feel, if they, if they have, you know, a significant following within your community, it is one way of ensuring that the community feels more involved and feels that the process is a genuine process that is considered everyone's consideration, everyone's point of view. That being said, don't rely only on those community leaders, right? You want to make sure that you're as broadly based as possible. You know, many people talk about the silent majority when they're talking about communities. You know, a lot of people that don't become involved don't say anything. But, you know, come out and vote and as a result, the election may not go the way sometimes is expected simply because those people only express their opinions at the time they vote. You should make an effort to try and halt them in the strategic planning process because they're really the heart, it's going, you know, they're, they have an interest in your community and the heart of your community that is going to want to feel that this process has been as inclusive as possible. There are three general approaches to plan development. The first is a top-down planning. And essentially in that one, council and senior management sets up a strategic plan and rolls it out to staff, the public, and stakeholders. Generally speaking, if you're planning to do a service-specific strategic plan, that I, I have seen work. I have not seen it work really well where you are doing that as a broad strategic plan that is meant to be a vision for the whole community, largely because you've got two or three people or maybe half a dozen people that have made that decision for the whole of the community. So some of council may not feel that they've had buy-in to the plan. Your, your staff may not feel that they've had buy-in to the plan, that they're being told what they're going to do. And the community may not feel that you're representing or have listened to them throughout the process. You know, it's a lot of the feeling that while your consultation wasn't a consultation, it was an announcement. You'd already decided, so why were you asking the questions, right? The other, the other aspect, bottom up, can be just as problematic. In that case, council expresses no preferences, goes to the public and says, what do you think? A municipal staff and public consultant is as broad and inclusive as possible and develops a plan as a result of that. The difficulty with that is that council may get questions or goals or objectives that it is not prepared to support. The council itself is unhappy with. So, you know, one of the things that is true of strategic planning, much like employee engagement surveys or other things where you're asking people opinions, if you're not prepared to act on something, don't ask about it. Because if you get involved in the plan and you're not prepared to do anything about it, you're going to create a suggestion, well, why did you ask me if we're going to do anything about it? And there's immediate dissatisfaction, immediate sense that you shut me down, right? So in many senses, a hybrid system where council comes up with perhaps a framework in which it is prepared to consider strategic planning, makes that framework clear in the process, and then says, now, within that framework, what do we want to do? And then genuinely and broadly engages the community within that framework, generally has the best result. So that, you know, the, the people being consulted understand that they may not be being consulted on everything because there are limitations to what council is prepared to do. That being said, council, I am prepared to open up on all of this other stuff. Tell me what you would prefer and how you would, how you would like to deal with it. On a practical note, generally speaking, you want to have your strategic plan moving forward and have meetings that are no, no more than a month apart as you're moving through the process. Because if you go longer than that, you're going to lose steam, it will lose traction, lose interest. You also want to try to start, initiate the process. And once you've gone out for consultation, you want to complete the process in a four to six month timeframe so that people feel that they were heard and that they were dealt with in a timely manner. They're moving forward with this. Also, given that we are already coming up in the fall to one year in the council's mandate, you know, putting it out a further six months, all of a sudden it becomes, you know, very, only the very low fruit on the, easy fruit on the vine is what you will achieve. Because it's not, you don't have enough time left in your mandate to start to achieve the harder, more long-term items. Although you could set the groundwork towards doing that. The law, the closer you do that to your, you know, the longer timeframe you have within your mandate to achieve things, the better groundwork you can set towards achieving those goals and look towards more midterm objectives. So some of the questions you want to consider. Is the vision clearly defined and understood by stakeholders? Do they agree on the direction where you're headed? As I said, the vision itself does not have to be measurable. It's a philosophical statement. But it should have enough meat that people understand it as a vision. Do you have a vision of Espinola as a tourist, as a tourism economy? As a, a bedroom economy for Sudbury perhaps? As a community on its own, with its own industry? You know, what, what kind of vision? You know, any other, I'm just thinking of three that come to mind. What other, what other vision would you have that fits for Espinola? You also want to think about, have there been a realistic number of initiatives been identified? So, you know, is there, is there not only not too many that I'm, that I'm going to, that I'm going to lose what I'm achieving or lose, or lose the ability to achieve anything meaningful? But also, is there enough in there that I'm going to achieve something, right? You have to have enough that you're going to achieve something, but not too many that you lose focus. You also want to prioritize those initiatives. So what is the most important one to what is the least important one? And in what order you're going to be filling them? Do you have a clear understanding of where you are today in relation to the direction you're moving towards? So again, you want to make sure that everyone understands your strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. That you have an understanding of what the cost of moving towards that strategic plan is going to be and how you're going to meet that cost. You want to make sure that you have identified, you know, each step of where you go, as you go along, and the resources and funds necessary to achieve those steps. Are there mechanisms in place to evaluate progress, report successes, and gather feedback? Again, as I mentioned, that which is not measured is not done. Also, that which, that which cannot be measured Also, that which cannot be measured is not clearly thought out, right? So unless you can identify a measure that you can achieve, really you haven't articulated what it is you want to do. You've gone back, you've sort of confused at that point visioning with setting a goal, right? So you want to set out a means of evaluating process, progress. You want to bring this back onto your council agenda in a regular manner so that staff has the opportunity to say, "Here, this is what I've achieved on your plan that you've set. This is what we have done to date." Or this is where we are today towards achieving those successes. You also want to have an opportunity set out for the stakeholders, most notably of course the public, to provide you feedback by various means as you go through the strategic planning process. And that can be through the use of social media, that can be the use of public meetings, be through any other means, you know, by which your community would normally engage with its stakeholders. Some tips from some of our other municipalities. You know, as I said, you know, without council and staff buy-in, the plan is going nowhere, right? So council and staff need to understand and agree with the benefits of the strategic planning before you even begin the process or it's not going to fly. I would also add in that as you move through the process, the more public engagement you can have, the better your public buy-in will be. And the more public buy-in you have, the better, the more likely it is your strategic plan will have success, provided that you also had council staff buy-in at the upfront of the process. You want your goals to be action-oriented and measurable. You want those goals to be something which people can see on the ground or in the behavior of the way in which their services are delivered, not something which is behind the scenes and is difficult for people outside of offices to see, at least in part. I mean, some may be there, it might be, might be talking about, one of our goals is the retaining, retention and retaining, the retaining and retention of qualified staff for positions which are going to be, which people are going to retire in the future. Well, that may be something that you're going to do, but you need to be able to communicate the benefit of that to the community so the community understands how that's going to go on. But unfortunately, the process of doing that is largely something which the public's not involved in, right? So it can be a little problematic. Regular progress reports to both council and to the community are important so that people understand where you are through the process, what you have done to date, and what you will be doing in the future. You need to build the plan into annual budgeting process because you need to resource strategic planning, right? Any of those goals that you've set are going to need resources to obtain them. And you need to identify where those resources are coming from within the annual budgeting process. It helps to achieve early wins. It helps to identify some things that you can achieve in the very short term so that people feel like they're doing something. It's hard, you know, very hard, it's very difficult to think about strategic plans where your goals, your first goal is three to five years out, right? People get, lose focus, people feel disillusioned, that nothing's happened lately. And it can be problematic keeping the, keeping the energy to keep the plan moving forward without any early wins. Keeping people informed means keeping them engaged, right? So you want to make sure that by not only achieving early wins, but by identifying and communicating progress, you're going to keep people involved. Keeping the initiative on the front page keeps it viable. So decision-making needs to be aligned with the strategic plan. When you're asked questions about services or what you're going to do or the budget process, one of the questions which should be asked every time once you have a strategic plan is how does this align with the strategic plan? Encourage strategic thinking along with strategic planning. So, you know, when you're thinking about strategic planning, you want to think about other things in your community that it should link to, your asset management plan, long-term capital financial plan, multi-year budgeting. You want to think about how decisions made today may impact your future goals. Remember that no matter what you do, there is no perfect plan and no one's, no, everyone in your community is not going to be happy with anything you do. You're going to have some people in the community that don't like it. You're going to have others that think it's wonderful. What you need to do is do your best at strategic thinking and implementation. Learn from what you're doing to enhance what you're doing the next time around. It's not, as it says on there, an aha experience. It's like the management process itself, it's a series of small moves that together keep the organization doing right things and head, as it heads in the direction that the community, with a proper engagement process feels that is the proper direction for the community. In planning, things aren't usually as bad as you feared. They're also usually not as good as you'd like, right? So just bear that in mind. You need to start simple, I guess, but start. What are some of the benefits of community planning? One of the first benefits is it improves community satisfaction. When the community feels it has been properly engaged through the strategic planning process, it usually has better buy-in to the decisions which need to be done to support that plan, which may, which may mean that while you're not going to eliminate complaints about tax increases or eliminate complaints about service realignments or changes to services so you're maybe not going to be in this service anymore, but you're offering a different service, you're going to receive fewer of those complaints and people will have at least the ability to say, "Well, that was the community's decision was to go in this direction." They'll have a better answer that people will generally be more satisfied with. As I said, it can inform policy implementation. Again, you know, in a perfect world, we'd have perfect policy. Unfortunately, we don't. So, you know, very often, policy can be interpreted in any number of ways. Sometimes in a way that may not be in a direction that is aligned with the strategic plan. If you have a strategic plan and a community direction, it provides a framework within which policy can be implemented so it better aligns staff's implementation of policy with both community expectations and council's vision of what it was trying to achieve with that policy, assuming that council's vision remains aligned with the strategic plan. It can inform the budget process because you're going to understand what you need to fund to achieve the strategic plan. So you're going to understand where it is that your budget emphasis needs to go. It can inform asset management plan policies and implementation because you're going to make decisions about which assets are more necessary to meet the strategic plan than other assets. It can also shape discussions around service delivery reviews. And by service delivery review, I do not mean necessarily looking into your services simply to cut dollars, but rather are we making this, are the services, that we're currently providing the services that the community wants and needs? And are we providing them to the community in the way that the community would prefer them to be provided? That's a different discussion than, we have to save this money, right? Which may be a part of a strategic, a strategic plan. But generally speaking, service delivery reviews should be more focused on the effectiveness and efficiency of the services that you're providing and that those services are the services that your community expects and are being provided in a means that meets that expectation. Shared service arrangements can also be something else that a strategic plan can assist you in discussing, particularly when we think in this day of increasing needs for certification and training and expertise. You know, it can be difficult in Northern Ontario to retain and to recruit and retain qualified staff, particularly if you're losing seniors, losing staff at very senior levels. So you can give some thought in your strategic plan to how you're going to deal with that and what option might be shared services options. On March 20th of this year, the minister, our minister announced funding to support small and rural communities' efforts to become more efficient and reduce expenditure growth in the long term. And some of the options which that unconditional investment was intended to help was service delivery and reducing costs through investments in projects such as service delivery reviews, shared service arrangements, and capital investments. We do have some resources available online to assist you with any of those processes. So we've had online for a number of years, our guide to service delivery review, which can allow you to do that, to go through that process internally so you don't have to necessarily spend a large amount of money on external consultants. If you choose to have an external consultant, I would still encourage you to take a look through that guide because it can help you shake your ass and can certainly help you reduce the cost of getting that service delivery review done by being already prepared with many of the things that a service delivery consultant is going to look at. Other options include the shared services study and the guide produced by MFOA that our ministry funded a few years ago. And we also have the Subur East Municipal Shared Services Study which was done in 2017 by KPMG. It was a report prepared for the Subur East Municipal Association, but includes additional consideration for other municipalities when you're getting into shared service arrangements. In addition to recommendations, it provides a framework to assist municipalities who might be considering shared services as a means of lowering service delivery costs, improving service delivery effectiveness and outcomes, or acquiring, maintaining, or improving staff expertise. So we have PDF copies of that that can be available to you if you want to go through and look at that process as well. It does provide a very good background for how to get into shared services. So, I know we've been through the, we had been through the process previously with Espinola, back when we were facilitating. At that time, we're no longer facilitating. But I can certainly try to answer any questions that you may have or assist you through the pro, through the initial parts of the process, but not through the consultation or facilitation.
I have a question for you. How often should a municipality go through a service delivery review or a strategic plan process?
Well, a strategic planning process, I would say that every council, at the start of their council, should review the strategic plan which is in place and decide if it meets their needs, if it is still in the work in progress, and if those are progress or towards goals that they feel that they have been elected to uphold and move forward with. I think it's something that councils should look at very early in their mandate because, as I said, the problem is if you look at it late in your mandate, it becomes too late to achieve anything. And if you achieve things earlier, but then you're halfway through your mandate and find out, "Oh wait, that's not what the public wanted because they did the best strategic plan", then you're going to undo work that you've already done. So I think that every council, you know, in the first year of their mandate should be looking at the strategic plan, thinking about it, meaning by updating it. Whether they need to go through the whole process or not depends on where they are through that process. I think that a strategic plan should look beyond the term of one council, but I don't think it should look much beyond the term of two councils because then you're looking at, you know, I think, too far beyond the ability to plan for what's happening. I mean, four to six to eight-year timeframe. When I started thinking, "What's going to happen in 12 years?", well, if I think back to what I thought 12 years ago would happen now, it's totally different, right? So you want to be somewhere in that mid-range. And so I think that, you know, a two-term plan reviewed when the new council takes office is generally what I would think would be best.
Right? Any other questions?
Okay, I know our last strategic plan that we did was 2013 and we haven't had a discussion about it at a council meeting. So we'll make sure we get that out of there to figure out what we want to be going forward and make that decision.
I think the strategic plan we had was in many respects all right, but there were very few measurable goals that were into that, okay? So it was a great general direction from what I saw. So that's something we have to do.
Well, thank you for coming. We appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. And again, if there is anything that I can do to assist you through the process, short of facilitating, which unfortunately I did last time, but I can, we're no longer doing that. I would be pleased to, I'd be pleased to do that. We have all those guides electronically. We don't have hard copies of them anymore. We do have an electronic version.
Is the Subur East Municipal Service System on or not? Or is that one of them?
No, I have to send that to you.
Okay.
I think that what you guys received, yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
When I back the office tomorrow, I'll send it, I'll send it to the clerk, the CEO.
And then the rest tomorrow?
Yes, they should, those are the website. If you have the electronic version of the deck, you can just click on it. Otherwise, you have to check the new browser.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I do have a motion moved by the prosecutor seconded by Helen Love, in resolve that special case of capital three hundred and seventy-seven PM. All the way, motions are.